That this work session, regular meeting, will take place in a municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 27, 2023.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation by Deputy Mayor Rahm.
Oh God, the Creator and Redeemer of all the faithful, hear our supplications and through thy infinite love and mercy graciously grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka. Councilmember Potasnick. Councilwoman Puitt. Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Here.
I'm sorry, Councilman Vasanella, I apologize. Councilman Wright.
Okay, we normally would have proclamations and commendations at this time. Item number five on the agenda. You can find copies of the agenda over there. Councilmember Potasnick was going to do that. He's a little late, so we will skip on to public discussion and go back to commendations and proclamations. We have a motion to open to the public.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public. Five minutes each. No yielding of time. Please state your name and address. You can only come up once.
Dave Robinson, 349 Biltmore Lane, Somerset Run, retired AT&amp;T Division Manager and NJIT Engineering graduate. I've analyzed the available traffic studies from the 15 warehouse proposals currently before the planning board and questioned the expert for the B9 proposal at the last planning board meeting. I came away with many more concerns than valid answers. Ten of these studies were done by either Dynamic Traffic or Dolan &amp; Dean consultants. The studies are remarkably similar in methodology, given the variety of the proposals and factors like size, new builds, or repurposed properties. The traffic impact studies performed by these consultants are, in my opinion, woefully lacking in actual data. Lots of pages and charts that are based, for the most part, on theoretical projections from the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers and Highway Capacity Manual. Several other traffic studies were based only on four hours of actual traffic counts, some of them 18 months ago. The B9 study was done on Thursday, January 22. Some studies relied solely on ITE projections with no actual data counts. Most of the individual traffic studies were done in a silo manner by not taking into consideration the long-term effect of the combined growth from 18 additional proposed or under-construction warehouses. This was done even though these experts were fully aware of all the other warehouse proposals. In fact, two Dynamic Traffic studies regarding two warehouses in close proximity on Schoolhouse noted that either one is identified as a potential significant traffic generator, but then concluded that each project individually would not cause any significant operation conditions. Go figure that one. Most of the traffic study future projections go out only two years, a baseline growth rate of 1.75 percent. It was taken from a New Jersey Department of Transportation data that represented the entirety of Somerset County, not the small area that we're talking about, which is a two-mile radius around the intersection of Elizabeth and Schoolhouse from Davidson to Randolph. The 15 new proposals on the planning board website, and three which have been recently opened or are being built, would add, if approved, approximately 3.2 million square foot more of warehouse footage and close to 500 more loading docks into this already heavily warehouse-laden zone. The township may covet the potential tax revenues from these warehouses, but should not overlook the property tax revenues from the four senior communities in their immediate area, as well as the Summerfields development. For example, the Amazon Distribution Center has paid about $2 million per year in property taxes in '21 and '22 per your tax department. Our senior communities paid about $22 million a year in property taxes, 10 times that. From the studies I've analyzed authored by Dynamic Traffic and Dolan &amp; Dean, never once did they conclude that the particular proposed warehouse would have a negative impact on the surrounding traffic and quality of life for the residents. All these impartial studies were paid for by the developers. It's not too hard to predict where the traffic expert would come out on these studies. Finally, there is this. Your own ordinance, 4371-22, frequently asked questions includes the following. Many of these applications are located either in close proximity to sensitive land uses, including residential zones, and/or located a significant distance from 287, which would require truck traffic to traverse through residential areas. Particularly due to their location, such developments would be far more likely to produce negative impacts to sensitive land uses, including noise, traffic, and air pollution. The town council should tell the planning board to put on hold indefinitely, or at least five years, any further approvals, including the B9 proposal. We need to collectively see the impact of the existing and under-construction warehouses. It would result in actual data and experience, not standalone short-term projections, given some time for this small area to absorb, if possible, the inevitable increase in car and truck congestion, pollution, and noise that even you recognize as possible, if not likely. When you are in a hole, stop digging.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Salomos, and I live at 7315 Main Lane in Canal Walk. I don't think much discussion has been had regarding the impact to we homeowners because of the warehouse traffic. I live in Canal Walk, and I'm .6 miles from 989 parking bays that Amazon holds. That's 989. The two bridge facilities are going to add probably another thousand. And what keeps me up at night, and I hope this is important to you folks, all I hear all night long, beep, 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 the sounds of the trucks in and out of those warehouses. And if B9 goes up .6 miles, it's going to come into half of Canal Walk. So what I'm suffering with now in the middle of the night, I can't sit on my balcony, because all I hear is beep, beep, beep. I've become accustomed to the sound of the train. Soothing. The sound of the beep, beep, beep is not soothing. It's annoying. So I just wanted to share that for those of you that don't know what it's already doing to we homeowners in Canal Walk. The other thing I want to touch on is about two or three years ago, I called our good mayor to ask about, oh, we're so pleased to see that Schoolhouse Road was repaved, restriped. Wonderful. We could use some bike lanes. I was told, well, work's not done, but our good township manager, we're going to work, and we're going to get bike lanes for you. The township has that in their master plan. You see bike lanes all over the place. We could use them on Schoolhouse Road between our development and Elizabeth Avenue. I think the discussions that we had indicate that there's ample room to put the bicycle lanes. We need them to get over to the new development on Randolph. We put them in our own development in Canal Walk. They're called sharrows, the pictures of bicycles and arrows that indicate this is a shared roadway. So that's what I'm entreating our town council to please move this forward and get our bicycle lanes in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Anthony Ricchio. I've appeared here before. I'm an urban economist, and I've put together for the State of New York and the City of New York key legislation resulting from the Clean Air Act to combine economic development with environmental protection. The town council, and in particular, the town lawyer, was gracious enough to talk to me. I see a conflict here. You've got an ordinance, a set of ordinance by the town council, at the same time, existing zoning requirements. Those zoning requirements were ill-conceived, but have not been adjusted. So whether or not we have an ordinance, let's say for the, we'll pick the noise ordinance, where you cannot operate beyond 7 to 10 o'clock. There is no analysis that you have, nor the planning department has, that could say why you did that. The existing zoning doesn't require it. If this goes to court, the town will be accused of being arbitrary and capricious. The same is true with the 200-feet distance between residential and the warehousing, and 500 feet. What is the difference? You can't prove that. I went to a planning commission hearing last week where I saw phantom numbers that were just told you, phantom numbers that did not demonstrate real traffic. But it was done by a planning commission that has phantom numbers about the existing traffic on the streets. So the planning commission doesn't know what's on the street. So you expect a developer to do that? I think that will become arbitrary and capricious. So somehow, this has got to be elevated to the state. This is a statewide issue. The legislature has to get involved. I would recommend that the council and the mayor go to the state and try to put something together similar to what was done in New York State, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Kiki Anastasikos, 3204 Anclave Circle in Somerset, New Jersey. I have two points to make. Well, actually, one is FYI, and the second is a question. Last Saturday, myself and two other members of the Citizens Warehouse Action Group attended a webinar. It was actually called, I'm sorry, it was not a webinar, it was a warehouse convening offered by the New Jersey Clean Water Action, which is one of the most respectable environmental nonprofits, along with the League of Conservation Voters in the state of New Jersey. And this was exclusively a four-hour meeting with different grassroots organizations, environmental lawyers, and low, environmental law clinics, and there was, as well as members of the Teamsters Union that surprisingly were attending as well. And among the myriad of ideas that were circulating and discussed in the breakout sessions, one was how to deal with truck idling. Because whether we like it or not, and of course, we're grateful for the ban on warehouses, but there are enough warehouses already, and there are more warehouses in the pipeline that are not affected by the ban. And so in the near future, we expect to see a further increase, a cumulative increase in the number of trucks, and hence, an increase in the number of trucks that are idling on public roads. So one of the ideas that I wanted to just pass along as food for thought was to create, one of the reasons that trucks idle is because the drivers are tired, they stop in order to eat, take a nap, and sometimes to wait for their turn to unload or load if they are early, and so forth. So one of the ideas is to create a Franklin Township rest stop by making use of one of the vacant corporate buildings that we have available, or any other land that is proposed. Of course, it would be far away from the, you know, the residential areas, but it would provide a safe, it would be gated, I mean, it would be fenced, rather, and it would provide a safe area for the drivers to stop. Maybe there can be showers there and a place for them to eat, maybe vending machines. And when it's time for them to go to their warehouse, they would have a very short, a very short drive to their respective warehouse. So I thought it's a wonderful idea, and it works. I tell you, the two Teamster members that were there were in the same breakout group as I was, and they were very much in favor of that. We all understand that their job is extremely difficult. Not too many people can drive those trucks, and they really don't have, except those rest stops, if we can call them that, on 78 and other right-off highway, those are not even rest stops. Those are just some space where they can park. And so why can't we give them more respect and also eliminate a problem, a problem that is clearly something that's coming up very, very soon in our township. And since I'm running out of time, I will leave the other comment for another time. It can wait. So that's my food for thought for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll answer you in depth afterwards. I just want you to know, we weren't making fun of you. We had been discussing exactly that.
You're kidding.
And that's what we've been giggling about, not giggling at you.
Wow. Really?
Yeah.
Oh, fantastic. I'll wait then for your report.
They may not be fantastic, but we hear you.
It was discussed. Okay, okay, thank you.
My name is Sally Zaharchak. I live at 4 Constitution Way in Somerset, New Jersey. I've spoken to you before. I gave you a standing ovation when the noise ordinance was passed. I'm used to, in management training, I was taught, catch people doing something right. And you did something right that day. I believe very much in catching my children when they're doing something right, rather than catching people doing something wrong. I don't have a political science background. I don't know a whole lot about government. My daughter, that's her ballywhack, her undergraduate was in political science. She's been coaching me a little bit about what that really means. But I do know, I chose this town, and I told you that a while ago, because I love it. And I've invested now, since my retirement, 17 years here, making friends, associates. My two sons are bankers, mortgage people, bankers in the state of New Jersey. They want me out of here. My other son owns a financial planning firm in Red Bank. He wants me out of here. And my daughter's an attorney in North Jersey, and she wants me out of here. And now my four kids have saked every realtor they know, and they know a lot, on me, and they're calling me to try to get me to move. I don't want to move. I want to stay here. I think we have your attention now. You're doing the very best job, I think, with some very deep damage control that you can do. But I do think, I really do think, that this should never have come to this point. I worked with actuaries. In fact, Bill Gordon, who's head of the actuarial, Vice President of Actuarial Science at Empire Blue Cross, was my boss. I was trained by the best. I understand data, garbage in, garbage out. Bill used to say to me, if your assumptions aren't correct, if your data's not correct, your report's not correct. Anybody who's intelligent knows that. You don't have to have a degree in actuarial science to know that. I have been looking at some garbage reports. I agree with Dave Robinson. The traffic data, the traffic studies, I'm married to also an NJIT graduate engineer. We're not stupid people. These reports, I don't know who looks at them, and I just am imploring you tonight to continue to remember, this is a political science arena. It is a government of the people, by the people, for the people. We talk in this country about trying to help the underdog, and we are bulldozing senior citizens, disabled veterans, and the elderly, and children in this country in a way that I'm astounded by. And I implore you to make sure, when you're giving reports and there is data, that you're having somebody double-check them. I hired people. I know when you hire a contractor to do a report for you, that they give you what they think you want to hear. I know how that works. Everybody in this room knows how that works, and so do you. So please, all I ask, double-check your numbers, double-check your data, and serve the people you were sworn to serve. And I thank you very much, because I want to stay here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Marlon Quan, 28, Jay's Corner. I was very much dismayed at this last planning board hearing, particularly because with brash and boldness, some of the things that were discussed, particularly the number of driveways that were being proposed by B9, were in fact discussed early on to say that there were going to only be two driveways. And now the town is asking for three driveways. And before, the developer wanted three driveways, but chose not to have them because they wanted to avoid variances. Now the township is requesting a third driveway, right back into the hands of the developers. Why? Because the 32 or 35 parking spaces in the smaller parking lot can't make a left turn as required, or as they desire, I should say, rather, instead of going around the building to the larger parking lot and getting out that way. And all in with the argument that it's safety first, and also for the convenience of those that are trying to get to 287 in regular cars. And the argument of not having a turn curb so that the trucks cannot make the left, so you need a third driveway in order to make that curb. Well, that sounds all pretty fishy to me, and it's becoming worse and worse with every meeting. I will tell you, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is not correct policy, nor correct procedure. If we're going to have a dictated township planning board telling them that they don't need a variance to have a third parking lot, I'm sorry, a third driveway for the safety of residents, that's not correct. You can still have a turning curb, forcing every car to make a right turn out of what is proposed to be their B9 warehouse, going up to Randolph and down Randolph to 287. Nobody needs to make that left turn, especially the smaller parking lot. And if you say that it's a safety hazard for the 35 cars to go around the building, what do you think the safety is for them making a left while trucks are making a right? So to me, the logic just doesn't fit, and it smells. And so I just ask the council, and I implore the council, to look at this in a different way. They wanted it first. The developers wanted the three driveways first, but they didn't want it because there would be a need for a variance. Now the township planning board is asking for a third driveway and avoiding the variance. Just doesn't look right. And at the end of the day, you know, a third driveway also is more risky for those pedestrians trying to walk down Schoolhouse Road, as well as bikers. And we don't even have bike lanes, let alone the fact that you can't bicycle ride up Schoolhouse Road towards Elizabeth. I mean, this is insane. You can't have it both ways. So I implore you to look at this and do whatever you can, but the fact of the matter is, is that at the end of the day, this really doesn't smell right. Thank you.
Jan Brant, 22, Bryant Court. And I don't know if I'm going to get through this, because I'm really upset. I was on vacation last week, and I didn't have to think about all this, and it was fantastic. And I got back today, yesterday, and now it's back hitting me in the face. And it's really stressful. And I know you all have done a lot for us, but I feel like it's not enough. You know, the B9 warehouse, Schoolhouse, is going to affect Canal Walk, and it's also going to affect the families over at Somerset Run. And it's going to be, figure, from where you're sitting, Mayor, to the back of the room, that's approximately 100 feet. So from my back patio, 100 feet away, that's where the warehouse is going to be built, right? And that's where the parking lot's going to be built. I know Mr. Vornlocker's going to correct me, or he's smirking right now, or something like that, which is really not right. But anyway, there's going to be 60 truck bays. We all know that diesel trucks affect the breathing of families, young children. I know across on Schoolhouse, they have playgrounds out there. I'm sure they're not going to let their kids go out there. I know that I'm not going to go out on my back patio. I know when my grandchildren come over my house, I'm not going to go on my back patio with all the trucks. I mean, Mr. Robinson could probably tell us how many trucks an hour it is, how dangerous it's going to be for me. And you all are supposed to be protecting us. The MLUL says that if something's going to be built, and it's going to affect the health and safety of the community, then you can stop it. I know Mr. Dominic told me that it doesn't have any variances. And I like what Marlon was saying, and that was something I was going to say. In the scenic corridor, driveways, this, I feel like everything is benefiting the developer, right? I even found a picture on Facebook with the developer, you know, he's sponsoring a golf thing. I think Mr. Dominic was in the picture, Mr. Vornlocker, Mark Healy, and Anatole Heller, who sold that property. And we know that this is, you know, all part of the picture of why this property was sold over to Link Logistics. And I feel like everything is benefiting this developer. And number one, there's no variances, so you guys could just approve it, 1, 2, 3. However, in the scenic corridor district overlay, it says that driveways should only be 12 feet. So here, Marlon's talking about they want three driveways with a big thing that turns. I mean, of course, they have variances, but it's being overlooked by Mr. Healy and Mr. Dominic saying, well, of course, we have to make bigger driveways because it's a warehouse. No, the scenic corridor says 12-feet driveways. Why are we not saying that this isn't a variance? I just don't understand why it's not a variance. I didn't attend the last meeting, and boy, you know, I was just in another place because I was unplugged from the internet. But I heard that at the last planning board meeting last week, June 21, that Mr. Dominic, I know he's watching, hi Vince, and I want to say Vince has been great. He has helped me with all the stuff I need, all the paperwork I need, but I heard that he was consoling Liz Gabe, or actually hugging her after the meeting, actually, like, you know, the side hug and consoling her. I mean, if you tell me that developers aren't getting, I mean, nobody, Vince Dominic, I don't think hugged anybody in Seawak and consoled them, but he's consoling the developer. Yes. And the other thing is, and now I'm going to tattle on Vince Dominic, I was once here at a planning, not at a township council meeting, I believe, where Vince came out to one of our members in the community and was telling him, because he was saying how there's empty warehouses, and he was in his face telling him he was a liar. So sometimes the way that we're treated has not been respectful. But it just seems like everything, I stole 42 seconds, that everything is for the developer. But it just seems like everything, I stole 42 seconds, that everything is for the developer. Everything is for the developer, just like not last meeting, but the meeting before, the developer presented new information and I actually like tried to say something and it went ahead and he went on for hours and hours about new information that nobody else had and they shouldn't have done it. They know better, but they're taking advantage of us. Do you think seniors want to be donating money to help funds to fight this warehouse? I know Link Logistics knows that and they're trying to wear us down and it's not right. And you all need to do something about it because this is, maybe I don't have studies about our health, but you know it's going to affect our health.
Terry Thorson, 18, Lubed Drive, Somerset. I want to get a job with one of these traffic study people. Because when you look at the traffic studies for all the different applications, it's boilerplate. It's the exact same report with a chart, that is the specific chart that tells you how many extra seconds you're going to wait at an intersection. I don't care. I don't care how many extra seconds I have to wait at an intersection. That doesn't really belong in a traffic report. What we really need is how it's going to affect the traffic. We've had at least four major traffic accidents in Franklin within the last week, one with the death of a person. The traffic in Franklin is getting worse and worse. And I think maybe we have to look at our traffic and say, these are the limits that we have. Something else, at that Clearwater Action convening on Saturday, we had the biggest contingent. There were people from New York, there were people from New Jersey and Pennsylvania. We had four people from Seawag, we had a member of the zoning board, we had a resident of Franklin who was actually representing an environmental group from New Brunswick. There were only about 40 people there. We had the biggest contingent. They were horrified when they heard how many warehouses were proposed in Franklin. Mercer County was already, was up in arms because they had one. Countywide, one, next to Quaker Bridge Mall on Route 1, which is a really major highway in New Jersey. So we're getting looked at by other municipalities in the state as being the dregs of humanity. If you don't want to live in a good place, go to Franklin because they'll have whatever you want to do. Something else, in all the applications, I noticed that whenever they ask for a variance, they're going to advance the Municipal Land Use Act. They don't say how they're going to do it. They just say they're going to do it. Why don't they have to give a reason of how they're going to advance that ordinance? Another thing I noticed, when you do an application, you have a stormwater study, an environmental study, you have a traffic study, there's no air quality study. We don't require an air quality study. With the Canadian fires that we had a couple of weeks ago, that was 2.5 particulate matter. That's what the trucks give off, 2.5 particulate matter. So we had a preview of what it'll be like. In fact, the next two days, we're under a warning for the next couple of days. It's not going to be nearly as bad as it was a couple of weeks ago, but our air quality has been dropping from good to moderate and probably near the borderline between moderate and the next worst level. So we'll have another preview of what it's like. And I was impressed by the, I was really shocked when I saw the Teamsters there. They had their Teamsters T-shirts on and I thought, why are these people here? But they were advocating for more humane treatment of truck drivers, maybe in a warehouse, don't use all the square footage for a little office and a lot of warehouse space, maybe cut a little chunk out and make a place where they can go to the bathroom. Because to tell you the truth, what we've heard from UPS drivers is that over at one of the warehouses, since the drivers don't have any access to bathrooms, they're using outside the building. And what happens is the maintenance people have to come out once a week and spray bleach on the side of the building because of the health hazard. Just take these things into consideration, please. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Stan Zeharchak. I'm with, I'm for Constitution Way in Somerset. I just want to take a little different approach. I want to build upon what the first gentleman's indicated. The truck traffic in this town right now is very severe. It takes me sometimes two and three turns of the light to get through and onto 287. I got my hands on this dynamic traffic report and they're saying that every warehouse supposedly has 100 traffic, 100 trucks going in and out. So that's, I mean, a trip in and a trip out. So it's 50 trucks, but it's two trips in and out. The, if you multiply that by what you have in the township now at about 25 warehouses, I think you have here, that's 2,500 trucks, right? So trips of trucks. If you have another 20 warehouses yet to be built, that's another 2,000 trucks. I want to know how 2,000 trucks are able to navigate two-lane highways in small areas. What is a town going to do about that? That's something that's going to fall on the taxpayers to widen the roads, to make special concessions for the truck drivers and the like. I just feel that it's something that township has to take into consideration before they allow all of these trucks into our area. Thank you.
Angelica Granados, 3307 Jackie Hall Trail in Canal Walk. A few months ago, an ordinance was passed as number 4271-22 prohibiting heavy trucks over 4 tons for driving on Metlus Road. But for now, I've seen only signs that says that's prohibited only between Schoolhouse Road and Western Road. Metlus Road is, I mean, Schoolhouse Road and Amwell Road. I don't see any signs from Western Road and Amwell Road. Okay, that's my question. And the other thing is that I think some time ago, Mr. Vornlocker also said that on local roads, the limit is also four tons, except when it is in the industrial area. But Western Road is a local road. Well, that's what I, that's what I, you can correct me if that was wrong, but I thought that was the thing, that local roads only allow four tons. And that Western Road is a small road. It's also like one lane for its side, if possible. I mean, for big trucks, I think it's very difficult to even have two cars there. So it's a very small road, but it still doesn't have a sign that says that it's only allowed four tons. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? No one looking to come forward, Mayor? A motion to public portion be closed. You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Within second and all in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public portion is closed. Before we answer any questions, let's do the accommodations and proclamations. Councilmember Potasnik.
Good evening, everyone. Get set up. So happy Pride. My name is Ed Potasnik. I'm on council. And as many of you know, June is Pride Month and we have a proclamation from the township council as well as the mayor for Pride Month. So I'm going to read it and then present it to an outstanding leader in our school district, Dr. Gail Nelson, who leads an LGBT club and hear from a recent graduate potentially as well. So whereas the township council and the township of Franklin recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer, questioning and plus, as we refer to it as LGBT plus, Pride Month. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBT plus individuals have had immeasurable impact to the cultural, civic and economic successes of our country. And whereas the Franklin Township is committed to supporting visibility, dignity and equality for LGBT plus people in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBT plus equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on a principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, the township council calls upon the people of Franklin Township to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the LGBT plus community and is an important act to engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliances, build acceptance and advance equal rights. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the township council of Franklin Township, Somerset County, New Jersey hereby proclaims the month of June 2023 as Pride Month in support of the LGBT plus community.
I just want to say good evening. I'm Dr. Nelson and I teach at the high school, Franklin High School. I've been there for, this is my eighth year, but I've been in the district for 36th. So when I came to the high school, there was a need for GSA or LGBTQIA club, students advocated for that, who were in the community, who felt isolated, some felt ashamed and some, when they needed someone to talk to, had no one to go to because they don't trust people with the information. So of course, at first when they asked me, I was like, oh no, I don't know what to do. I'm already doing a club, you know? And I was new at the school, so I felt like I might be stepping on someone else's toes who probably wanted that position. But since no one stepped up to the plate, I certainly took the charge. And as a result, our students are graduating, our LGBTQ students are graduating with honors. They are working, they are proud of themselves, they know they still have the support even though they're not in school. And this is Noela, she's graduated, Noela, I get it wrong all the time. Noelia, okay? She graduated, but we're still in contact because it's important that the support system stays intact. It's not when they graduate from school, you graduate from your support system. And I'm honored today to say that the PACE club, that's what it's called at the high school, I had a group of students and myself, we wrote a grant, it's called 50 States, 50 Grants, 5,000 Voices. I'm honored to say that we won a $10,000 grant. And we propose to have a youth conference, a mental health youth conference and social justice conference right here in Franklin. We want to be the biggest one. I'm contacting NJEA, SCA, FTA, Guardian State Equality, and some of our students are even going to leadership camp this summer. So we do a lot in that club. We're small, but we're mighty. Everything's confidential, but they need that support. And I'm going to let a graduate right here discuss some things of growth.
Good evening. So my name is Noelia Rodriguez. As Dr. Nelson said, I am a recent graduate from Franklin High School. I graduated in 2020, the class of COVID. And I didn't get prom, I barely got graduation. But I was grateful to have the opportunity to be part of PACE when it just started. I was the vice president of the club. I was a senior when it first started, the first year. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. So I would like to explain that it was a very supporting environment for me. I had just came out as transgender. I was not presenting as female. I had not started hormone replacement therapy. My name was not even legally changed. But throughout the process, throughout the club, Dr. Nelson and so many of my peers allowed, well, gave me the opportunity to get to know them and know that I'm not alone. And even Dr. Nelson helped me with the resources with getting the forms I needed to legally change my name. She gave me resources mentally because I was going through such a hard time, which a lot of the LGBT community goes through. I don't know if you guys know, but 40% of transgender people are more likely to commit suicide. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, I guess. 40% of transgender people are more likely to commit suicide than cisgender people. And I think that's just very mind blowing. And I can say that I identify within that 40% because I did have multiple suicide attempts throughout my journey. But today, with the help of PACE, with the help of Dr. Nelson and the peers that I worked with, I was able to find my voice, find my community and find a group of people that supported me. Today, I have been on hormones for three years. I feel happy with how I look. I have gone gender reassignment surgery, both top and bottom, which I'm very proud of. I am here today and I've got to thank PACE for giving me that space to grow and giving me the resources. And I know that I'm going to continue to work with you guys because I am actually so inspired with Dr. Nelson and PACE. I'm actually an education major today. I'm studying to become a teacher and an American history teacher. So I'm going to be teaching our students about everything, about black history, the real black history and about the LGBT history in a very appropriate manner. And I just wanted you guys to know that yes, love is love, trans men are men and trans women are definitely women. Thank you.
To all our young people out there, as an openly gay person, I just want to say, you know, there was a phrase we used, back Ellen DeGeneres was part of a movement, it gets better. When those times are tough, and I really appreciate you sharing your personal story because many of us have that, particularly in LGBT community, know that there are people you can be with and it does get better. There is light at the end of the tunnel, there is acceptance, we are a community together. And that's why it's so important to celebrate pride because we don't have equal rights, because we're not looked on the same. And we have to remind people that together we are embracing and getting through those difficult moments. So I know we took up a little time, but Dr. Nelson, keep up the great work and to you and your journey and everyone, thank you.
And just real quick, I wanted to give a shout out to Kevin Locke. He was the person who was instrumental in getting the petition to get PACE on board. He had to work tonight and he just started cosmetology school. He wrote a long thing for me to read, but most of all, he just wanted to thank town council for being supportive. And hopefully you will all support us when we start planning for this youth conference because we want everyone to be out there helping. And it's for everyone, it's an inclusive youth service kind of conference. So don't just think it's LGBTQ, we embrace everyone, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
I was just thinking, I'm so happy you failed at suicide. Okay, that was very moving. Okay, to answer some of the questions, first gentleman who got up, I think Mr. Robinson, talked about traffic studies. I implore you to repeat this at the planning board meeting. They're the ones who will vote on it. You asked us to speak to the planning board. If I did, that would be reason, if they were to turn down the application and it came out that I spoke to them, that would be reason for the developer to go to court and say that the decision should be overturned. You essentially said, asked us to have a moratorium on further warehouse building. The problem with a moratorium is it's, stop me if I'm wrong or I'm going too far. The problem is, is that when someone goes before the planning board, it clocks The problem is, is that when someone goes before the planning board, a clock starts. And we have so much time to begin the hearings and to complete hearings. And if we were to have a moratorium, it's very possible the developer would just say, okay, he'd wait for the clock to run out and say, you haven't listened to my application on time. And they would go to a judge, and the judge could grant them their application just exactly as they've applied, without any interference, any adjustment by a planning board. So while I understand you can do a moratorium due to reasons of health, it is the opinion of both our township attorney and the planning board attorney and some other attorneys I've talked to, who I don't want, I don't think it would be fair to disclose their names, who agree that that's not what the statute is talking about. They're talking about an emergency such as a septic system, I mean, sewage system failure. So they can't take any more sewage, so they've stopped new building because of that. That, because especially since we don't govern air quality, and there is no requirement for those buildings to meet any air quality standard, that if we were to shut their operations down due to air quality, that we would have no standing, maybe standing is a technical word, no leverage in court on that. Am I basically correct? So they essentially would have carte blanche if we did a moratorium. Believe me, I have discussed this multiple times. How can't we, why can't we do this? Is there a way we can do this? And I'm told that I would be putting you in jeopardy if we were to try to do that. So that's why we haven't had a moratorium. There's been a lot of discussion on traffic, and I appreciate what was said, I understand you have a traffic expert, and I hope he or she brings up the points you've brought up. So we have, you know, the person who is concerned about him sleeping with B9 so close to his home, we have put in hours of operation. And I disagree with the gentleman who's had the experience in New York. I think we have a very good case. I don't think we're arbitrary and capricious. I understand those words and how they're used. I've put a lot of thought and planning into when we turned off further developments of warehouses, and I think we have an extremely good case. I think it's obvious to all of you that we have a good case. Mr. Kwan, I'll let Mr. Vornlocker just explain the three driveways when he gets time to speak. Not all variances are bad variances. And you again try to imply there's a conspiracy here. There's a reason for the three driveways, and that, again, will be working in your favor. I'll let Mr. Vornlocker get into the details. It is, although I do believe this is a statewide issue, and it's something, there are state statutes that I would put you in jeopardy if we tried to overcome. That's why I've been talking with Assemblyman Danielson about various things we might try to do at the state level to do that, so to change things. So I'm working with him diligently, trying to get things done, but it is Trenton, and things are slow. Kiki, and I don't disrespect you for calling you by your first name, I just don't want to mess your last name up. I think that would be more disrespectful. I'm thrilled that you brought that up because we were thinking of doing it, or at least discussing it, and I think it's something we have to be very careful with. I was, I'll be honest with you, I was afraid if we did that, you would accuse us of pandering to the truck drivers. So I'm glad you have brought it up. That gives us a little more freedom to work. Our concern is, and Councilwoman Francois actually wrote exactly what I was, what we've been thinking is, are we going to attract more trucks? It's not just Franklin trucks that will use it. Word will get out very quickly, and the truck that's on their way to Pennsylvania will stop in Franklin overnight so that they can have a rest stop, because there aren't many of them out there. And it's not a simple bunch of parking lots, we don't want them to idle, so we have to supply them some means of powering their truck so they don't have to idle. It may actually be quite profitable, but it may put a lot of traffic at the corner of Davidson and Easton for where I'm thinking it might go. But, you know, that's not, obviously not written in stone. I think it's something that we need to discuss at a high level, and then we need to have a lot of public hearings on it. So we get your ideas in it, and we don't make, we don't have an unintended consequence. But it is something that we've, you know, you clearly have Mr. Vornlocker's office bugged, and we will find that bug. But I'm glad you liked what we were talking about. I'll let Mr. Vornlocker discuss the intricacies of Sina Corridor that Ms. Brandt brought There are signs on Metler Road about weights. I agree, they're kind of minimal, and we have already discussed, for lack of a better word, fortifying those signs and making them more obvious.
Let me get to me.
And as far as air quality requirements, I'd love it if we could have an ordinance on air quality requirements, but that is the venue of the state, and we can't touch that. We did order, I announced at the last meeting, we are about to order 20 air quality meters to distribute. One of them will go, if they accept it, at the clubhouse at Somerset Run and the clubhouse at Canal Walk. And it will give us a case if things change significantly in the air quality to be able to go to the state and say, you've got to help us here. And we'll get those in soon so that they'll be in before more warehouses are built, so we'll have a before and after to compare them to. That's what I had in answers. I hope I haven't missed anything, Mr. Vornlocker.
No, I can just, there's a couple of things that you didn't cover that I can cover, and maybe some things that I can clarify, that you've asked me to clarify. First, we'll talk about bike lanes on Schoolhouse Road. So yes, Jim, we had several conversations about it. Unfortunately, the federal manual on uniform traffic control devices does not permit sharrows on the section of Schoolhouse Road that is between basically Canal Walk Boulevard and Randolph Road because of the current speed limit. And there was several speed surveys done by the Township Police Department to see if a lower speed limit was warranted, and it did not meet the requirements of a lower speed limit. So therefore, I can't put sharrows there and not be in conflict with the federal manual. And putting it in conflict with the federal manual then would expose the township to a liability should someone hit a bicyclist where those sharrows were painted and they should not have been. So that's an ongoing project that we will continue to look at, so that's why it wasn't done. It's not because I didn't want to do it, or I didn't want to have the Public Works Department do it. In fact, I had an engineer in the Public Works Department design the complete plan for Schoolhouse Road from Weston Canal to Elizabeth. Unfortunately, with that missing link, it doesn't make much sense to do the parts, you don't do it piecemeal, you do length. So we'll continue to work on that. So that's the answer to that. As far as the four-ton weight limits, so four-ton weight limits are set by ordinance. And not every street is a four-ton weight limit. It has to have an ordinance. Local streets, residential streets, doesn't matter. If it doesn't have an ordinance prohibiting truck traffic, truck traffic is permitted. The ordinance that was adopted by this council, maybe almost a year ago now, was to establish weight restrictions on Weston Road from Elizabeth Avenue to its, the bend, which then becomes the municipal portion of Weston Canal Road, and then that section of Weston Canal Road from that bend by the canal to the Manville Causeway, as well as Metlers Road from Schoolhouse to Amwell Road. The signs are in place, I know that, I had many discussions, but they don't go in the middle, they only go on the end. So there is no sign at Metlers and Schoolhouse, I'm Metlers and Weston, because that's internal to the weight restriction. You put it at the beginning of the weight restriction. Weston Road does not have a weight restriction between Elizabeth Avenue and Cedar Grove Lane, so the weight restriction starts at Elizabeth heading westbound. So that's the four-ton weight limits. And, ma'am, you can't talk to me now, I only get to talk. And if you have questions, you can certainly call my office, you all have my number. So that's the weight restriction issue. Just a little, and maybe I will not address all of it, I am slightly offended, just slightly. Jan, you have never offended me before, but tonight you did. And so what I will tell you is that the photo that you were discussing, I believe, is from 2014, and it was when your developer made a donation, and I was there for that donation. I have never played in a golf outing at Royce Brook Country Club. I haven't played, been able to play golf because of physical issues since 2016. And I certainly had, at that time in 2014, absolutely, positively no idea who B9 Schoolhouse or Link Logistics might be. I don't even know that they existed in 2014. But your developer did, and your developer built many things in Franklin Township, and your developer also donated a lot of money, and this in particular fundraiser was a donation to the Township of Franklin. So therefore, as the manager, I would be there at an event that was sponsored by the Somerset Business Partnership. So let's put it in perspective, I'm not in cahoots with the developer, and I kind of take offense to you even thinking that. But nonetheless, and I won't dispute your distancing, but you do live a little bit more than 50 feet away from Metlers Road, and certainly much more than the loading docks on the other side where the building is proposed. As far as the third driveway, so the third driveway was actually something that I had suggested when we first began to look at this warehouse and how we were going to try to limit traffic in and out of this driveway to try to effectively curtail trucks from driving past Canal Walk. And one of the ways was to separate traffic, car traffic versus truck traffic, which, from my olden days and traffic engineering days, what you don't want in a parking lot is a mix of small cars and trucks, because when the trucks are backing up through the loading dock, into the loading docks and in the area, you don't want the cars circling a building, but you want them to exit from the parking lot that is designed for cars. And one of the things that I had spoken with on more than one occasion with our engineer, Mr. Mazzi, about his review of Link Logistics B9's engineer's site plan, was the need to keep separate the car traffic from the truck traffic, and also design the driveway in such a manner so that trucks leaving the warehouse would only be able to physically make a right-hand turn and not be able to make a left-hand turn. There would be no reason to restrict car traffic from making a left-hand turn. In fact, while this might be wildly ridiculous in thought, someone who lives in Canal Walk could work someday at this warehouse and leave out there, but also people who are heading to points in Hillsborough, who might go down Metlers Road, or people who work in Manville, live in Manville, who would go down and not drive down to Randolph Road and drive the long way, that the left turn out of the parking lot would not be ever in conflict with truck traffic making a right turn out, because truck traffic would be making a right and cars could make a left. The idea of a third driveway was one to satisfy the township's desire to keep car traffic separate from truck traffic, and you can all shake your heads, but that's the reason behind it. And the reason behind it is from a safety standpoint and from a desire to construct the driveways in such a way to keep trucks away from your neighborhood. If there was no reason to keep trucks from making a left-hand turn, there would be no reason for a third driveway. So that was the reason for the third driveway. And that was as a result of discussions that we have had in-house that had nothing to do with Link Logistics. So that was that. And the only other thing that I've had recently had the opportunity to look through as a result of the traffic studies, the RFP that's out for the new traffic study that the township will be engaging someone to complete. And I had the opportunity to look at traffic volumes. In particular, there was a study done by a firm called Abington-Nay, that's an engineering firm that still exists, and that study was done on behalf of the township in 1985. The study was done because the township had concern about traffic related to office buildings. And I got an opportunity to look at traffic volumes related to that traffic study in 1985, and the projected volumes for 1990 and 2000, which is what that study was asked to do. The traffic in the Davidson Avenue, Elizabeth Avenue, Campus Drive, Weston Canal Road area at that time, 1985 to 1990, exceeds the traffic volumes of today by a significant number. There was much more traffic on the roads of that area of the town at that time, 35 years ago, than there is today. That's primarily due to a shift in the way people work. Well, there were trucks too, because there were warehouses, distribution centers, and right now, with most of the proposed buildings, not disputing the issue that truck traffic will increase, but the truth is that right now, with the number of buildings that are in place, they basically equal the number of buildings that were in place then. There were a number of industrial properties that are no longer there, that were there then, but most of the car traffic was such that it caused great congestion. You've heard me say this before, I don't want it to go back to that. That's why I think it's important that we look at the traffic condition now and what the projected traffic conditions will be in the future. That's the purpose of the traffic study that the township will engage in soon. But that traffic is something that is not something that is being taken lightly. It is something that the township is about to invest a significant amount of money. And Dr. Kiki, I'll refer to you as Dr. Kiki because that's what you are, a professor. And so it's interesting, I have reason to travel to 78 Carter often, my family, my wife's family, and now my son and daughter-in-law and grandchild live in Pennsylvania. And I was there on Sunday, and there were nearly 100 trucks on the eastbound side of 78, right around 6:30, in that area just before Jugtown Mountain. I know you're familiar with it. That's what brought that conversation with the mayor and I, and actually, and Councilman Wright, who's not here, I had that conversation with him this morning. There are many, many things to be concerned about, but I certainly think that it's something that should be given some thought. My fear is that, given the lay of the land, so to speak, in Franklin Township, I don't know where you can put one that would be satisfactory in size to deal with the problem and not have an impact on another residential neighborhood other than Canal Walk. And that's what we have to look at. So I think that's all the questions that I needed to answer for now.
Thank you. Now I don't have to ask you about the picture of the golf outing.
And now you know.
Yes. Okay, for those of you who are trying to follow along our circuitous agenda, we are now to council comments and reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Potasnick.
Thank you. Mayor, just one quick announcement for folks who live in Ward 1, along Ridings Parkway. The mayor, myself, the township manager, and our director of public works, Carl Haug, are going to have a meeting at 6:00 PM on Monday, July 10th, to discuss the median and improvements that can be made to ensure it's more consistent, it also is more able and easily able to be maintained consistently, and then also that it's doing its job to help absorb water and protect the environment and the community, you know, with some tree planting. So we had a proposal for folks as they drive into Ridings Parkway, kind of to mimic that with live trees, there's a few dead ones, we'll need to replace those, with live trees throughout the whole segment with grass underneath. And this way, it can be kept low, and then you can get the full benefits of the tree canopy cover. So that, again, is on Monday, July 10th at 6:00 PM at the Consolata Missions now, that was formerly, now it's the Board Administrative Complex for the Franklin Board of Education. So if you live on Ridings Parkway, English Lane, Stirrup Way, Hunter's Run, or Fox Hill Road, you're welcome to join us. You can also You can also send me an email. My email's on the website and also in the letter. I want to thank the clerk and the clerk's office for sending those out to the homeowners there. And we look forward to a nice discussion and helping to resolve what has become, you know, something that's very inconsistent and a nuisance, but also probably not doing the best it can to provide cover for the community. Last point on that, too, is the roadway is going to be repaved. That's sort of separate from what happens in the median. So I know there's been complaints about that as well, and it's one of the worst in the town, and it's getting attention. So that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Oni Jaka. You're my favorite councilman. Councilwoman Pruitt has stepped out. Councilwoman Francois.
You didn't speak into the mic and say what you just said. You had nothing for today. So I say it for you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to announce that the Franklin Township Community Foundation gave out two scholarship awards to two scholarship high school recipients. $5,000 awards to two engineering students. And the students that received the $5,000 awards, they had to write an essay about why they wanted to major in engineering. They had to be able to show what community service they have been engaged in. They had to have a 90 or more GPA average, no major discipline issues. And the essays that they wrote and the reasons why they were going to major in engineering was phenomenal. One was a young lady. I happen to be an engineering student, so I'm proud that we need more women in engineering. And one was a male. The guy was Alex Quisbert, and the female was Gabrielle Bartrudano. And they were very, very impressive. And we've been sitting on the community foundation for quite a few years, myself, Deputy Mayor Rahm, and Deputy, and Councilwoman Vasanella, and Councilwoman Pruitt. And so this is one of the, one of the things that we're very proud of about the community foundation, giving out these scholarship awards. It doesn't seem like it's a lot, but $5,000 goes a long way when you're a student. And we're very, very proud to be a part of that and to invest in our youth's future in engineering specifically. And most of the essays that they wrote, they talked about the reason why they wanted to major in engineering, to make the world a better place. So it was a great award ceremony. So I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and don't forget about our June, July 3rd fireworks. Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. When I went to Syracuse, it was $6,000 tuition. So then that would have been a lot of money. That's, no, 5,000's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes. No, 5,000 is a lot. I mean, 1,000's a lot, and we have a lot of great local scholarships that do 1,000, 2,000, and that's important, but let me tell you, 5,000 is, and well-deserved by the students that we awarded them to. So a couple of things. So I mentioned the bike lanes and Schoolhouse. I mean, it sounds a good idea, and I don't know where we're at net point of putting bike lanes in some of the places that were designated quite some time ago. Just, of course, would want to make sure it's done safely and with a very, I personally like them to be divided and off of the roadway, but if nothing else, a very wide, well-marked, well-lit area for the bicycle. But there may be a reason it's not in that particular spot now, but we'll look into and try to find out. So Juneteenth parade, not sure who, I know most of us were there in some capacity or another. It was wonderful going down Hamilton Street on the float. I know we were looking and recalling a lot of places that have been there for generations and a lot of the new construction, but the most important part of the day, of course, was celebrating with the local community about the long overdue, long overlooked, important part of history that Juneteenth represents. And there was, I was there for a while, I know there was somewhat of a festival or gathering at the park, and lots of people, including our Congresswoman Bonnie Watson-Collman and others, spoke. But I look forward, I imagine next year it may be another parade, and it's good to put Hamilton Street to use for that. There's a lot of things mentioned tonight, and I'm just going to say this in general, whether it's a traffic study or any kind of report that's looked into or studied and presented, doesn't have to be a warehouse, it doesn't have to be traffic. A lot of studies are traffic-related, of course. But at the end of the day, because I've dealt with probably dozens, if not hundreds, over the last several years, you consider the source. In other words, who's footing the bill, what their objective, and what's their goals? And I don't say that in a mean way, it's just, it's like any written information that someone's hired to do. You follow, technically follow guidelines, but it's, let's just say, for all the technical aspects of these reports, a lot of it's subjective and discretionary as far as what's included and how it's presented. But I say this seriously, not simply about traffic reports or anything to do with warehouses. It's just, everyone needs to be looked at, reviewed, double-checked, have various other opinions that may agree or disagree, part of the discussion. So you just have to take it in context of, like I say, I like to use the expression, who's footing the bill and for what purpose. We had a public safety meeting tonight, discussed a handful of things, nothing real urgent, I mentioned a couple of things. Very soon, if not now, the command post vehicle is being built, it's being custom-built, specifically to the desires and needs that our public safety experts have put out to the company building it. And because it's custom-built, almost like one of those big fancy RVs would be, it will be several months before we get it, but the $500,000, which is a fantastic grant, leaves more money that we had already allocated in our own bank account to be put to other uses, or not to be put to other uses, but to be part of our fund, our money in the bank, so to speak. So that will be coming in several months, and of course, we will tell the public about it, perhaps have whatever the public safety director wants to when we unveil it to the public. Discuss looking at different rates for outside jobs, so to speak, when they're doing traffic work or road repaving, that kind of stuff. We've got to make sure it's at a practical and competitive level, so we're reviewing that for possible changes. And I'm not sure the details, but the Garden State Track Club, which is a wonderful organization, is presenting eight scholarships to students, and we may do that here down the road. It involves a lot of diligent work by Police Department and something called the Garden State Track Club, which has been around for a while, if I'm remembering, if it's what I remember, it's been around a long time. And I think that was it. Oh, and the American Civic League finalist, we were the only town in New Jersey to have a finalist go to the national competition. And although they didn't win, it was a great honor. And I know Senator Booker had acknowledged those efforts, and I think is going to formally acknowledge them, but we were the only town to, in New Jersey, to have somebody there. I think that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Udine.
Thank you. Good evening. There wasn't any community meetings in the last two weeks. So what I have attended is a soft opening of Tribe Studios located in 800 Hamilton Street. It's really a very cute concept. It's catered towards more of the social media. They have it set up where you can go into the building, I think it's, you know, you call ahead of time to schedule viewing, and they have different photo sessions set up, so you can go in and do your, like, Instagram or Facebook, Snapchat, whatever media that you have, TikTok. And it's really interesting, their concept of the way they have it, it's like, if you go in, it's like you go into a color room. So, you know, there's a flower wall, there's a musician wall, there's, you know, all sorts of things. And if you're not into a certain wall, it's like, literally, they can pull down the curtain and change it to a different viewing. So it's really interesting, and it was a completely different, you know, place that I've been to, on a grand opening in Somerset. So Tribe Studios, 800 Hamilton Street, please go check them out, give them a call. And, you know, you'll be surprised, they have a lot going on in that small space. There's been a couple emails and phone calls around street signages. I've reported them out to the township manager around the Mount Lane, having some signages not visible, and it's the trees, branches that are growing out. So DPW is definitely, it's on their radar, and I'm sure they're going to take care of that very soon. So thank you for reaching out and letting us know about the street signages. I don't want to be too repetitive, but I agree with Councilman Vasanella about the bike lanes. I think that's a great idea. I've seen families go out in bikes, especially now, since it's summertime. You know, riding it in the streets is not the best. It's, you know, it's a concern. I've given paths to families when I've seen them on the road, so it's a great idea. I think we'll take a look at if it's feasible or not, but I do like that idea. Traffic study has been discussed over a couple of months, and I think, you know, that's what resulted in us of making sure that we have it approved in our end and have it done. I think it's high time that we looked at it again. Things have changed from the pandemic. We have more population growth, right? We have businesses growing. You know, we have the warehouse issues going on. I think traffic study is something that's going to help us understand our area. It's going to help us understand what we need to do next in the next five years. At least it's going to give us an idea, and we can work with the public on understanding what you guys want and need and kind of do a work session. I think, oh, congratulations to the 2023 class. I know I could not attend the graduation ceremonies for Franklin High School and the other smaller middle schools that had it, but I always love attending these graduation ceremonies or moving up ceremonies, as they call it. So congratulations to all the little ones, as well as the seniors. And lastly, I do want to wish Eid Mubarak to all the Muslim families that will be celebrating it tomorrow. And that wraps up my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Pruitt, you've had a harrowing night. Are you up for a council comment?
Mentally, no. I do want to apologize for my tardiness. I was at the State House for budget, but I don't really have anything else, just happy to finally be here with you all, so. There was a public safety meeting, I was unable to make it.
Councilman Vasanella has.
Great, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick update on the YMCA at Franklin. I think we reported out a few months ago that the YMCA of Greater Somerset Hills was undertaking a study, feasibility study, of building YMCA in Franklin. So that study was completed on May 30th, I believe, and they reported out the results today. The good news is, the survey came out supporting the YMCA in Franklin. Everybody understood it's a very valuable addition to the township. It's going to help and serve a lot of families and kids, adults, everybody like. So they have recommended YMCA to go ahead with the, I guess, the campaign, the campaign to fundraise for the function. So they would be undertaking that in the coming months, and you will hear from all of us. At the time, it's purely going to be funded by public donations and the grants and the loans that they will be responsible to raise. So that is off and running. Hopefully, it will become a reality in the township in a few years. That's a good news. Other than that, I couldn't attend the planning board meeting because I was ill, but I do hear your comments, and then, you know, we would definitely have a conversation about some of the concerns that you expressed. I had been to two, I guess, two graduations locally, as well as a ribbon-cutting ceremony of a real estate firm, Keller Williams on Davidson Avenue. And if you are making a left on Route 27 from Finnegan's Lane, sometimes, you know, that gets backed up. The good news is the State Department of Transportation has decided to make a left-turn lane at that light. So going to be much smoother and faster left turn into Franklin Township from Finnegan's Lane into Route 27, so that should be coming up pretty soon. Last but not least, HRC is going to have its meeting tomorrow. Environmental Commission is going to present the goals and missions. Members, as well as, happy to announce that Junior Commissioner, Helen, has graduated, so we would be looking for a new junior commissioner. As you know, we have a high school student serve as a junior commissioner in the. And then that I did is in the county workforce development board, board meeting, where we appointed new organizations to a two-year term, run the one-stop, and the training program, as well as the administration. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. I know you were at a school opening as well.
Not the high school.
No. A mosque.
Oh, Sadiq School, yes, I forgot about that. Yes, our interfaith council president, his tireless efforts resulted in a brand-new school at the Majid Ali last weekend. Yes, thank you for reminding. So it's unbelievable. The school looks fantastic. Again, it's all generated through donations and philanthropy, and hours and hours of efforts to put it together as the president of the school. Hats off to our good friend, Dr., I don't know if I say this correctly, Dr. Karazi. Good job. A great addition to the township. Private school at very affordable tuition. Am I correct? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I regret not being able to go to Juneteenth and the high school graduation. I got COVID. So if I can get COVID as careful as I am, please, please be careful. And, but I'm two weeks out now, so I felt it was safe to come here. They told me I could come back to work, so I came here. I've spoken enough, so we are on to the manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two things to add to earlier, having nothing to do with earlier. One is just to reiterate Councilwoman Francois's statement about the fireworks, July 3rd, which is a Monday before, and it begins at 6:00 PM. Music, food trucks, entertainment at the gazebo, come one, come all. Weather forecast, I've been watching multiple times a day, and right now, maybe a little overcast, no real rain in the forecast. Keep your fingers crossed, don't want two years ago, it was somewhat of a deluge right as the fireworks first launched. We don't, we need that again. But then on a little bit more serious note, speaking of rainstorms, sometime shortly after midnight last night, the police department's radio tower was struck by lightning. That makes a big boom. I got to see the videotape of it from our. That makes a big boom. I got to see the videotape of it from our security cameras. It knocked out a number of different functions within police, the police department as a whole, and dispatch. Most things came back up online, and there's redundant systems for everything that we have. If something fails here, it either gets switched to another agency, like Somerset County Communications, which is what happened with some things. Everything is back up online except for, there were two switches, telephone computer network switches that got knocked out. They were rebuilt by the IT department through the course of today. And there might still be some non-emergency extensions, desk extensions, in the police department. So if you were trying to call someone in particular and got a message, something along the lines of, you know, that number is not available, and that might carry on into the morning. Kind of had to send the IT department home since they'd been working since 12:30 this morning. That might happen into tomorrow, but I believe that just about everything is up. 911 is up and running, dispatch is up and running, non-emergency 873-2300, which is a separate system, separate and apart from the internet IP phone system, that's the non-emergency line. That's up and running. So everything's, you know, you should be able to get the police department, if you need them, without any problem whatsoever. In an emergency, dial 911, and you will absolutely get the police department. But I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that event. Lightning strike. That's what I got for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Number nine, council discussion item, there is none. Number 10, there are no approval of the minutes, no minutes to approve. Time to pay the bills, the warrants of $9,469,368.69 on June 27th are presented to township council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potaznik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Public hearing on adoptions on second reading. First reading's announced to the public that we're going to consider an ordinance. Second reading is an opportunity for the public to speak and the potential that we will pass the ordinance. Ordinance 4415-23, authorizing the acceptance of a deed of easement conveying a permanent water pump easement and two temporary construction easements from Laurel Avenue Corporation concerning property at block 502, lots 172.04, 112.04, and 113.03 is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open for public hearing on this item only. Same rules as stated before.
Now you've seen no one come forward, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potaznik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance number 4416-23, an ordinance amended the code of the township of Franklin County of Somerset State and New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 115, Dogs and Other Animals, Section 115-15, Procedure After Infliction of Dog or Cat Bite Is Presented for Township Hearing and Final Adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open for public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're open for public hearing on this item only. Same rules.
Seen no one come forward, Mayor. A motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. So this is an ordinance. We have an ordinance that tells what to do if a dog bites a person, but we don't have an ordinance for what to do if a dog bites another animal. Now we're clearing that up. We're doing that because it happens. And any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potaznik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
We have no ordinances on first meeting, but I'll give some foreshadowing. The bamboo ordinance that you may have heard about if you were following last time will likely be on the agenda next time. Consent agenda. Items A through P is listed on consent agenda. Portion of this meeting are presented to township council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item or discuss an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potaznik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Resolutions to be voted on separately. There are none. Any old business boards committees or commission vacancies? Hearing none. There is no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, you have to stay here. We are adjourned. Be well, Franklin.